I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for August 17, 2015. May you please stand for invocation?
Let's pray. Father, we're thankful for the opportunity to be here tonight. We pray that you would be with us as we conduct city business. We pray for the families and children in our community. We pray for the businesses for their continued success. And we pray for our employees and our administration as we move Jeffersonville forward. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
At this time, we have a special guest to lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance. We've got troop 149 from First Christian Church led by Mr. Anderson. If you all please come up and lead us, we'd be so honored.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do you all want to introduce yourselves? You're good? Oh, okay. Apparently she wants a picture. They didn't want to introduce themselves, but they're getting their picture taken. Right up there with the council.
Suck it in. Guys, come out here. Lisa, you're gonna have to get one way or the other. That ain't gonna work.
Can you two go back that way? Yeah.
With these two big bruises, there's gonna be a void in a little.
There we go. One more. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. They're like, oh, great. Roll call, please. Councilperson Smith. Councilperson Stavney. Councilperson Wadsworth. Councilperson Sellers. Councilperson Webb. Councilperson President Julius.
I'm not president anymore.
Oh, yeah, Gil. I'm here. Councilperson Julius.
Here.
Councilperson Owen.
Here.
Councilperson Samuel. With the record group, for all council members are present. Thank you. Minutes to be approved for our regular council proceedings of August 3, 2015.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor?
I have a question. Vicky, there was another set when I came in earlier. I was passing them down. To which setter do we go by?
The one that doesn't have an S on Samuel. So I got a motion, a second to pass the minutes of August 3, 2015, that don't have the S on Samuel. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, minutes approved. Approval of the agenda, and keep in mind, we are tabling the unfinished businesses of number two and number three. So I have a motion with the tables.
I'll pass to move the agenda and excluding number two and number three.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Claims to be approved. Amy, welcome back. We missed you.
I'm sure she missed us, too.
As you all know, Amy had a beautiful baby girl named Cora. Too bad she didn't have a picture to put up.
Good evening. I'd like to request approval of claims totaling $788,413.07.
Counsel, I went in Friday and reviewed all the claims, and I'm going to pull some claims. So get out your pen. It'll be on pages 12, 14, and 16. And then I respectfully ask that when we approve the claims, that they will be approved contingent upon they become a legal claim to Amy and Heather's and my self-satisfaction. And then also, after tonight, I'm gonna pull, and it won't be a contingency. That way, they can make sure these claims get right.
Okay, what, there are certain claims in 12, 14? I mean, what?
Yeah.
I mean, which claims?
She's gonna tell us.
Okay, I'm sorry.
On page 12, under the Parks and Recreation, it's middle way down, the Party Central, for $190. Now, we're moving to page 14. We have the Louisville Crashers for $5,000. It's halfway down the page. And then under the Department, 590 Other Park, all three for David Simpson, for $170, $425, and $170. And then on page 16, it's about a quarter way down, starting with the 100% Poly LLC for $700. The Endless Summer Band for $1,800. The James Allen for $400. Jason Smith for $300. The Louisville Dolls for $300. Party Central for $1,564. And then when you move down after the Chase Credit Card, where we have the three David Simpson Juniors, we got one for the $3,400, $425, $425. And the very last one, the Jeff Goes Country Party Central for $650. Those last ones do not have any signatures or the contracts or agreements. They will be paid contingent upon if they become a proper claim. Did anybody have any more questions for Amy?
I have just a question. Amy, are you planning on notifying them or?
The vendors or?
Or Department heads or whoever? Whoever appropriate on those?
Yeah, Paul's aware and Hannah's aware as well.
Yes, I met with both Amy and Heather on Friday, and I called Paul, and Paul's in agreement of our course of action. So, and actually, I think Heather and Amy met with both Hannah and Sarah today.
We have some of them resolved already, but we're working on it.
Motion to approve with those contingencies.
I'm going to stay.
Do we have a final number?
It's as presented.
It is as presented.
Yeah, because they're contingent upon, so.
It's my second. Second, if not.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Got a motion and a second to approve for $778,413.07. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Moving down to report of the clerk. Then we'll go into unfinished business. Scott Lewis. We've got 2015 OR 39 veto override and ordinance of additional appropriation.
Yes, before you tonight is a certificate of override of mayor's veto of ordinance 2015 OR 39. Apparently, that ordinance or portions of that ordinance were vetoed on August 13. So this is the next regular meeting after the veto date for you to take action to override the veto. Pursuant to the antilegal, it does need two-thirds vote of the entire membership, which means a minimum of six votes to pass the override.
Just say a few words? Yep. The veto relates to completing the Whirly Complex, adding additional parking spaces, and putting a building smaller than what was originally planned, but a building that would have locker rooms, concessions, and some office space. You know, this project, there are a lot of aspects to this project, a lot of history to this project, part of which is youth soccer, recreational soccer through Clark County Soccer Association. And I know Paul Duckworth, who's the president of CCSA, Clark County Soccer Association, sent an email out to everybody. You know, they donated probably what's worth, I don't know, maybe $2 million worth of land with the idea that we would fulfill our end of the bargain and improve the fields and build a building. So from that perspective, I encourage that we follow through. But also from other aspects, such as Jeff High and through our educational, from greater Clark County school systems. There was an email that was sent out from Carson Webb, who's the Jeff High soccer coach, and Craig Harris, who's the girls' soccer coach and is currently the basketball coach for the girls at Jeff High. They encourage us to go ahead and follow through and build the complex with the locker rooms. They believe that there are some safety aspects to it, as well as having locker rooms will give them more opportunities to be able to have tournaments and for youth programs to happen at the Whirly Complex. But also from an adult league and even from a semi-pro league, there's aspects to consider. I know Nathan Pitcock, who's the owner of the Rovers, is here. And I'd like to invite him to speak just for a second, if I could. But, so, come on up and speak. But it's not just recreational soccer. There's select soccer, and there's football. Jeff Football plays there. Jeff High School Football is played there. And middle school football, River Valley and Parkview, the big rivalry game, they play there. And they would like to have this building as well. But Nathan?
So, we're a semi-professional soccer team, and we play there from May through July. And we've been there two years now. Simply put, locker rooms are a necessity for us to continue to be able to play our games there. It's part of the league standards. And, you know, they've been good with us because we were told from the outset there was gonna be locker rooms eventually. And, you know, we feel like we're starting to develop a home there. People are starting to know us, and we're starting to get a decent crowd out at the games. And I think, you know, we're starting to get a foothold, and I feel like we can really grow that. But in order for us to do that, you know, we need to have a proper facility. And so locker rooms are just simply a part of that. I also think, as Ed touched on, that, you know, the kind of programming that can go on there the rest of the year is dramatically increased with the building, with the increased parking, from tournaments to high school games and things of that sort. As it is right now, it's a nice field, but to me, it's sort of unfinished. And this is just the next step in doing that, so.
So with this becoming your home, could we become the Jeffersonville Rovers?
You know, we rebranded just back a year ago in May when I became the owner of the club. So, you know, it's subject to discussion.
Thank you. And then just let me also say that, you know, throughout this process, as far as I knew, the mayor was supportive of this. I know the Parks Department, the Parks Director and their assistants have been excited by this project, encouraged this project. And I thought the mayor was on board with this project as well. So I was surprised to hear of his veto. I know he's had concerns with safety throughout the city. He's mentioned that numerous times. But this is the first time he's ever connected the two or has been against completing the Whirly Complex. So with that, I urge the council to override the mayor's veto.
And I'd like to add to that. I thought, as a council, we were very transparent. I had you speak as president of the Parks Authority both times. This came up in the council meeting. We had, we opened up public hearing. Nobody was here. I've got nothing but positive messages in response to it. And so you know, when I learned of the veto on Friday, I immediately contacted both Chief Kedrick, both Chief Kavanaugh, and both presidents of each union and explained to them. None of them had an issue, so I'm in support of the override. So I'll entertain a motion. I'll make the motion.
Well, before you do the override, I feel constrained to inform everyone. I think I have by email that I did receive one and only one, let's just say, contact supporting the mayor's veto. And that was based simply upon the perception that the athletic complex only supported soccer and football. And there was a concern that other youth sports were not considered, you know. And the feeling was that they should be considered, very simply because we're expending, you know, basically a significant amount of taxpayer dollars. That's basically all the information that I received, and that's the only comment that I received in support of the veto.
And if I could respond quickly, I mean, we support basketball at the Fieldhouse and spent a lot of money to maintain that old Fieldhouse. We support and maintain the baseball fields, Whirly Fields. We have senior programs at the Kent Ellis Building. I mean, we support a wide variety of activities through the Parks Department.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion and a second to override, do a veto override of ordinance 2015 OR 39. Is there any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Roll call, please.
I did have a question. The veto was line item veto, and it appears there were two lines that were crossed off. Of the $3 million that was being appropriated, there was only a million dollars that was vetoed. $2 million that was going to pay down the debt for visiting park wasn't vetoed, which I think is worth mentioning, because we do need to pay down that debt before 2017. What were the line item, the two line items that were vetoed are for the construction or the completion. What were those, where were those monies coming from? Was that parks open space or?
You know, I would defer to finance, because what happened is there was various funds that had surplus funds from prior years of not spending all that we had. So it was there carried forward. And what I worked with Amy, and I basically said, which funds would be easiest for you to move and not cause any financial problem in the future? So I'm not sure exactly which funds they pulled those from.
Yeah, because that was a transfer that you all did at the same meeting when you all did the appropriation.
Right. Was the, since the veto, has there been a finance committee meeting or any other meeting to come together and find another way to finance the project or the completion?
No, we just had a finance meeting Thursday morning, and we didn't know about this veto until Friday, late afternoon. We didn't have a chance to.
If we really wanted to, we could use the edit dollars to pay off the, or to move the money around in a different way.
Right.
I mean, it's just.
Well, I think the goal is to get the project complete, and I don't think anybody argues against completing the project. And the goal is to pay down the debt before 2017. The only thing that seems to be in question is what monies are used. And there's a veto, and no discussion since the veto as to if there's any other options on financing.
They've been discussing this for quite a while, haven't you?
It doesn't sound like it's the funds. It sounds like the mayor just thinks that we won't have enough money for public safety. He says additional funds shall be appropriated for public safety before expanding the Whirly Athletic Complex because the City of Jeffersonville requires additional police and firefighters. He doesn't say he cares where money's taken from.
Well, I think that's evident by the whole thing not being.
Well, unless you've had conversation with him.
I haven't. But if he was against the whole thing, he would have vetoed the edit dollars that couldn't be used for public safety. The $500,000 from the general fund could be used towards public safety, if that's the issue, but there's.
Amy, how much money do we have left in the general fund?
Please.
Yeah, of course, we won't be doing anything till next year anyway, until after the new budget. So it really doesn't matter for this year, but. Yeah, so there really isn't an issue with that.
So I call the question. Roll call, please. Councilperson Smith.
Yes.
Councilperson Stavney.
Yes.
Councilperson Wadsworth.
Yes.
Councilperson Sellers. Yes. Councilperson Webb.
Yes.
Council President Gil. Yes. Councilperson Julius.
Yes.
Councilperson Owen.
No.
Councilperson Samuel.
Yes.
Yes, has it? Thank you. Moving on. 2015 OR 40, an ordinance amending ordinance 2007 OR 45, requiring Jeffersonville City-owned vehicles to display vehicle identification stickers.
Yes, this passed on the first reading at our last meeting. And I think since that last meeting, there's a request that there be an addition to that language, that the identification decal that we're referring to in the ordinance shall not be magnetic. So what I had done, or should I do that? Change there, the paragraph one, after the "now therefore be it ordained." Basically, the third line of that paragraph, "The said decal shall not be magnetic," and then continued on with the existing language on the first reading, "and shall also include the identification of the particular city department that owns the said vehicle, machine, or equipment." So that, I think we pass it on the first reading, just in case we needed to make some minor changes, such as that. So that's the only change between now and the first reading.
So are we approving this on?
Be second and third if you want.
It's your discretion whether you want to do it both second and third, or second only.
I make a motion to approve 2015 OR 40 on second and third. Second.
I got a motion and a second to pass 2015 OR 40 on the second and final reading. Any further questions or comments?
I'm just full of comments tonight.
Okay, that's fine.
That's what I'm gonna do. I've heard, and like I said, you can hear anything about the city. Could be truth, could be rumor, but it has been said, whether it's true or not, I just want to comment on that. There are certain people who have city vehicles who don't want the stickers on the cars for some reason. And I think if they have a city car to drive, it's not theirs, belongs to the city. Insurance is being paid for by the taxpayers. There should be no question that there should be a city emblem on the side of the car.
I agree. I agree.
So for those who don't like that, then maybe they need to give up their city vehicles.
And Scott, and Vicky, I emailed, copied both of them to Bubby. Bubby got a copy of this, and he's aware of the added language. So once this is signed and we receive it back, then Bubby will have that go-ahead to make sure that that's been carried out.
Well, and just to point out, this is an amendment of ordinance 2007 OR 45. So the requirement to have the vehicle identification on all the vehicles and equipment and so forth has been in place since 2007. So it's not tech.
That was on the vehicles, but not equipment?
Well, no, it is. It was in there.
Oh, it was? Okay, because we haven't had any equipment tag. Okay.
Yeah, the only thing that this is changing, if you remember, other than just adding the language about the magnetic, that the decal should not be magnetic. The only thing this is changing of 2007 OR 45 is that the particular city department that owns the vehicle, machine, or equipment is identified in the decal. Other than that, it's been the policy of the city since 2007 that all vehicles, equipment, machine, have city identification decals. What's that? Well, I'm saying, but at least since 2007, yeah. So this is something that's not new, so to speak. It may not have been enforced. It's not being enforced, but it's not new.
It's not being enforced.
But it's not a new, yeah, it's not a new issue.
It's that given forces it.
Yeah, it's not a new requirement.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Ms. Conlon, 2015 OR 41, an ordinance to transfer certain funds within the same department. This already passed on the first and second reading.
Yes, again, this is for the new copier machine that is much needed with our copier being around 15 years of age, and the parts are very hard to get. Will also be Drainage Department will be using this along with the Clerk's Office. And again, it will be able, you'll have a mobile app to where, on your cell phone, to where if you want to print something, you can have it sent. It'll be colored printing.
Supposed to approve 2015 OR 41 on the third and final reading. Second.
You got a motion and a second to pass 2015 OR 41 in the third and final reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. We have Ms. Cummings. We're gonna have several public hearings for ordinance granting petitions to vacate public ways in the City of Jeffersonville. I guess the first one. I guess it doesn't matter what order we go in, does it? Do you have these?
I mean, I've got them in the way. Neighbor sent them to me.
Hi, my name is Rachelle Cummings. I'm with the law firm of Smith Carpenter Fondreze and Cummings here in Jeffersonville. Our firm represents Clark Memorial Hospital. We are here on behalf of the hospital and its new entity regarding some petitions to vacate public ways. During the transfer process of the hospital, the sale, and the transfer of the real estate, it was identified through survey work and title work that there were various old alleys and/or public ways that had not been vacated. And so David Blankenbaker did a comprehensive survey of the campus of the hospital and identified those for us. We have actually five separate petitions. Some are 10-foot alleyways. Some are actual portions of roads that had previously been vacated, parts of those roads, but other parts and pieces had not been vacated over the years. None of these roads or public ways are being used by the public for access whatsoever. Some of these, as you'll find through the drawings, were even under buildings, under the hospital building itself, and parking lots that have then since been reconfigured as well. So really, we see this as a kind of a cleanup process as part of the transfer of the hospital property. This is part of our kind of post-closing agreement or post-closing checklist, that the hospital take care of this and get these matters officially vacated so that there's never a question going forward whether or not these are still active public ways. There were no adjoining property owners to be notified. Again, this is all within the hospital campus. It's all been owned by the hospital for many years. So there's no adjoining property owners that may come in and have questions or things that they should be entitled to half of the alley or half of the road. Again, it's just old things that have been identified through the research that was done by the surveyor and by the title company that disclosed these as part of the hospital map. So there's actually five separate petitions that I filed, five separate ordinances. We did publish notice in the newspaper as well, in the evening news. I have publishers affidavits as well. It was published on August 5 of the public meeting that this matter would be addressed. And then attached to each of the ordinances, we have just kind of a snapshot that was prepared by the surveyor of the particular area of the alley in question. I have a large map, if anyone is interested in seeing where these are in relation to the hospital buildings themselves, or if you're satisfied with, just again, kind of the screenshots of the particular areas that are attached to our ordinances.
Do any of the ordinances have adjoining property owners? Are they all?
No, none of the, yes. The hospital owns all of the property that's in question.
These are.
Do you have any comments for opening up public hearing? Do we have to do a public hearing for each one individual?
I just consulted with Wes. We're both are of the opinion that technically you have to do a public hearing for each separate.
Okay, that's what I will do.
Can I just have a real quick question? Rochelle, did you, have you happened to give a copy of the publication?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure we have that in the record.
Yes, sir.
So at this time, we'll officially open up public hearing. Is there anybody here in the public that would like to speak for or against the vacate of this property, which is, I guess it's being Clark Memorial Hospital 127? I don't know. Can somebody point it out on the map?
I know, I can't. I don't even know where these are.
Is there anybody here that would like to speak for?
I have them highlighted if you'd like to see a large copy. We can start with the very first one, if you want to. The first one that I have is a portion of Illinois Avenue and Block 132, which is right in the hospital campus area, under the actual hospital building.
Parallel. That's one parallel to the hospital boulevard. See where Clark Dark Town? That's a building there.
And that's right up in here. Right, okay, it's right there in that area. Block 427 is in this area here. This is the hospital campus. This is Bray Street.
Well, they got here and so.
It's over there by where the parking lot is.
Okay.
I have another question also. I imagine that the hospital's been maintaining all these properties anyway, right? I mean, the city's not been going on property to maintain.
No, absolutely not. From a visual, you cannot see, they do not look like a roadway or alleyway.
Still got public hearing up.
Like a building, some things are just parking lots that have been paved, been scribed, as such.
So if anybody would like to speak on behalf of this, please come to the podium, speak your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none, I'm officially closing public hearing.
What's the first ordinance number?
42. Motion to approve 15 OR 42.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2015 OR 42. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we are on to Block 144. Yep. Yes. At this time, I'm gonna officially open public hearing. Is there anybody here with door against? Okay, I'm officially closing public hearing.
Motion to approve 15 OR 43.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2015 OR 43. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. And we'll move on to something 10, Alley Block 131. And we'll move on to something 10, alley Block 131.
Block 131 is actually under the hospital building itself. Again, the hospital building is here, Bray Street here, is the alley that ran under the hospital building itself.
At this time, I'm gonna officially open public hearing. Anybody wants to speak for or against? Officially closing public hearing.
Motion to approve 2015 OR 44.
Got a motion, a second to pass 2015 OR 44. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
We want the alley through the ER at the back.
Good luck.
Now we've got Block 1 Ingram Edition.
Block 1 Ingram Edition is here and here. The hospital building is here. This is the medical condo. So a little bit runs underneath the condo building, the condo parking lot. And then this is, again, public parking right here in front of the hospital.
I'm officially open up public hearing. Anybody wish to speak for or against? I'm officially close public hearing.
Motion to approve 2015 OR 45, sorry.
Second. Got a motion, a second to pass 2015 OR 45. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And our last one is Block 132. Block 132. At this time, I'm gonna officially open up public hearing. Seeing none, I'm gonna officially close public hearing. A motion, please.
Make a motion to approve 2015 OR 46.
Got a motion, a second to pass 2015 OR 46. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Cummings.
Thank you.
Ms. Cummings, while you're here, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Who's the new owner of the hospital?
I know you'd ask me. It's, yeah, but it's got a specific, LifePoint is the kind of the term that we throw around. It's like, it's R-H in Clark County, kind of a regional, yeah, regional health network, Clark County, something, something, yeah, I'm sorry. Right, right.
Is it a nonprofit, or is it a for-profit?
Yeah, it's a for-profit.
Will therefore start paying taxes?
It will be on the tax rolls.
Yes, that's my understanding, yes. Yes, all of the properties that are now owned, the deeds were transferred on July 31st into the new entity name. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Neely, we have a presentation, and Adam Fields' presentation on the Pat Harrison Resource Center in Norton Healthcare.
Sounds a perfect segue. Thank you, guys.
We aim to please.
Hi, thanks for having us. I'm Lindsay Neely. I'm with the Norton Healthcare Foundation. I'm also a resident of Jeffersonville, Indiana, and a member of the Power of Pink Committee. I'm here today with my coworker, Adam Fields, and we want to tell you about the Norton Cancer Institute, Pat Harrison Resource Center at Clark Memorial Hospital.
Thanks, Lindsay. Thank you all so much for having us. Lindsay and I are both very excited to be here tonight, and we're also very excited about the Pat Harrison Resource Center here in Jeffersonville and the impact it's gonna have not only in Clark County, or not only in Jeffersonville, but Clark County and Southern Indiana as a whole. So when it comes to expert care and advanced cancer fighting technology, Norton Cancer Institute is a pillar in our community. Norton Cancer Institute's committed to the prevention, treatment, and cure of cancer by developing and growing programs, including clinical research, prevention, and clinical services. Last year alone, Norton Cancer Institute across the region treated over 8,000 new patients. We employ 37 physicians throughout the region. We have three radiation centers. There are three infusion centers, nine physician practice locations, 11 patient navigators, and currently, there are three cancer resource centers. The Pat Harrison Cancer Resource Center will be our fourth, and it will be Norton Cancer Institute's first in Southern Indiana. Last year alone, there were 2,917 unique adult cancer patients and families from Clark County treated at Norton Cancer Institute. And we always like to say "families" because, as everybody knows, if you have been touched by cancer in some way, shape, or form, it's not a singular battle. The whole family and the whole community is wrapped around that person.
So since Adam told you a little bit about the Norton Cancer Institute, we want to talk a little bit and educate you a little bit about the Resource Center. So the Resource Centers essentially are focused around the individual and the families when they've been given the diagnosis of cancer. And these Resource Centers are open so that families and patients can learn more, they can find hope when they need it, and get educated a little bit more about their own diagnosis. But I think what's really important about these Resource Centers are they are completely free of charge. So no matter where you receive the care, no matter where you are in your cancer journey, you can come to these Resource Centers and receive that care and that attention completely free of charge. We've got a list of the services the Resource Centers provide, and we do have leave-behind packets, so all of this is in your leave-behind packet for you also. If you're taking notes or not, just to let you know. But these Resource Centers, we have private educational sessions with oncology-certified nurses, and that is important. We've got community support and counseling groups for the whole family. We've got classes and seminars. We've got art, music, and massage therapists on board to help, you know, with the recovery of chemo or radiation. There's also nutritional counseling, fittings for wigs, turbans, hats, whatever you need. And we've got information on clinical trials as well as a learning library so that you can get the resources you need to learn more through that as well. So let's talk about the vision specifically for the Pat Harrison Resource Center. Pat Harrison is a Realtor in Southern Indiana. Some of you may or may not know Pat. But through her own cancer experience, she realized that Southern Indiana really didn't have a warm, welcoming place. The place that she was sent for wigs or other services was a little dark and a little dingy. And if you've been through or have seen someone through the cancer process, that's not a place you really want to go. So our vision, it's currently the foundation and marketing offices. The building's located right across the emergency room at Clark. We're gonna completely renovate and remodel that building. And that's gonna include dedicated parking and handicap accessible space. We're going to, again, update for a warm, comfortable feel. We'll have dedicated nursing and support staff, as well as a comprehensive, integrated oncology service serving all of Southern Indiana. State-of-the-art healing environment, technology, and clinical equipment. We're gonna update the signage and the facade work, and then create some nice landscaping that will lend itself to a meditation garden space, as well as some healing spaces for patients and families.
So in order to see out Pat's vision and the vision of the Pat Harrison Resource Center here in Jeffersonville, you know, we're going, it's going to take some materials and supplies. As Lindsay said, we're gonna provide wigs, scarves, headbands, things like that, and we're gonna provide a library, you know, in reference to the latest research and practices for cancer that these patients from all around the area will be able to go to. We're gonna add some staff to the facility. We're gonna have some nurse navigators, art and music therapists, massage therapists, clinical nutritionists, and dieticians, again, which is all a free service to anybody who uses the Resource Center. And we take this approach because it's an interdisciplinary approach, kind of across a continuum of care. When one's going through cancer, you know, you have to nourish their mind, body, and spirit. And that's really what we're looking for with all these different disciplines inside of the Pat Harrison Resource Center. And it's an opportunity to better serve Southern Indiana. And it's, you know, to get Norton Cancer Institute and the Resource Center here in Southern Indiana, it's a better way to serve all of our constituency. So here's the fun part, the budget. So I'm sure most of you are probably familiar with the building across from the hospital. We're looking at about a little over $893,000 for facility renovations. One large cost of that's going to be to put an elevator inside that building. We are looking for three years of operating expense. It's gonna come in right at $846,000. That operating expense will cover the salary packages of an oncology nurse navigator, the art music therapist, the massage therapist, the clinical nutritionist, and again, the annual supplies and materials. So the total project cost is a little over $1.7 million. Now, let's keep in mind, that's over a three-year period. After three years, Norton Healthcare is going to absorb all costs and run the facility indefinitely.
All right, so my turn to talk about Jeffersonville. I really do think that the impact on Jeffersonville is drastic. If you or a loved one has had or the diagnosis of cancer, you want to be treated close to home. You want to be treated close to family. And I think having that service here is going to allow us not only to impact our community, but impact those that, our neighbors, our friends, our family, that have been given the diagnosis of cancer. Obviously, as Adam said, we can't do that without support. So we currently have six lead gifts to help fund this project, as well as hundreds of individual donors. And then we've also worked with local Southern Indiana contractors and businesses to do most of the work. And those businesses have donated a portion of their work to help us keep our costs down. We are trying to be mindful of both the renovation costs to help fund that operational expenses so that we can really set this project up for success. So we're here today in front of you, the council, to present three opportunities for support. The first is at the $50,000 level, and that would include a naming opportunity for the garden patio, the large group therapy room, and the massage therapy center. We've got a $30,000 level, which would help with the naming of the small group therapy room. And then at the $25,000 level, we have the lobby atrium. So I will, you know, as Adam said, this is really to help us through the first three years and help get the project started. And, you know, we just thank you for your time, and we'll open it to any questions that you might have.
Who actually holds a deed to this property?
It's part of the agreement with LifePoint and Norton Healthcare. So once that is finalized, we, Norton Healthcare, will sign a lease agreement with them so that Norton Healthcare will-
So LifePoint will own it, but you'll lease it, Norton will lease it.
Correct. So that, you know, when we cover the operational expenses, that'll be tied into that.
First set of funding opportunities, there are three items listed. Is that $50,000 for all three, or $50,000 for each one?
Each one.
And is that per year, or is that?
Are you listing this one time?
Just one time.
The one-time commitment?
And it would provide an indefinite naming. So if you picked one of those, at the end of the three years, the naming wouldn't go away. It'll be there indefinite with the Resource Center.
Once again, what's the relationship between this one and the one in Louisville?
So all of, so Norton Healthcare has the Norton Cancer Institutes. And as part of the Norton Cancer Institute are the Resource Centers. So if you think of kind of that tiered approach, the relationship is this doesn't exist in Southern Indiana. As Adam said, we had close to 3,000 Clark County residents that were treated at our facility alone. So kind of branching over to Southern Indiana will be still part of that umbrella system, but just a new location.
Is this something you have to have an answer for tonight?
No.
Well, the reason I ask, we have a finance group of people that meet and discuss and talk about this stuff. And if we decide to or not to, we figure out kind of the stream.
Sure.
And to me, I mean, I like it, but I would like for the finance people to sit down and look at that. And if that's a decision to move forward, fine, if not, fine. But I'm not trying to put the pressure on you guys, but it's $50,000, $25,000 to $50,000 a year.
Only thing, as a finance member, that I would request, correct me if I'm wrong, just if you're in favor enough of us, for us to explore it. You know, you know what I'm saying?
I think, yeah, I'm in favor of you to explore it. I'm not saying I'm for it or against it. But, you know, I know, and I'll- Well, I'm, you know, several years ago, we was putting out about $200,000 a year for a lot of these projects, and they're all wonderful, okay? However, it got to a point where we never seen anything from the projects. I mean, nobody ever came back and updated us on the projects. I mean, we was funding this through tax dollars. And it took us a while to stop it or vote it down, but basically, we cut it out. All these fundings, except for the Boys and Girls Club, and we had a five-year commitment on that, and we honored that five-year commitment. And then once it was done, it was done. So, you know, I just, I just think this, I think it needs some discussion, good or bad, right or wrong. And I think it needs some discussion because you could possibly open a Pandora's box. And so I just, I just think, I don't want to, personally, I don't want to take a vote tonight, you know, simply because I would just like some discussion, and you guys look at it, and we can, you know, we can have conversations about this and see if we would like to move forward. That's all I would say.
Just for clarification, where you had the naming and funding opportunities.
Mm-hmm.
I thought, my mind misunderstood, but let's say we chose the $25,000 lobby atrium. Is that a one-time thing, or do we have to pay that for three years?
It's the one-time thing.
That's what I thought.
$25,000 over the life of the project.
And then we have basically the name.
Correct. So it would, like, if you pick that option, go ahead. It is. And we have that in the takeaway packet as well.
Ms. Neely, do you have a card that you can?
Yeah, I'll give the packet.
We've got some packets right now we can hand out, or we can wait till afterwards, which-
Whatever you prefer.
Well, I didn't know if we would need them at the finance meeting, if we had any further questions or anything like that.
Yeah, and we're always available for questions via phone, email, whichever way everyone sees best.
I guess the answer to any question, I mean, speaking for myself, I would encourage, that the, me, I would approve or whatever to move forward and let the finance people look at this and see if it's something that we would want to, a venture we want to get into and look at, you know, or just, so I'm good with you all looking into it.
So is that pretty much the consensus of the council to move forward and?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I appreciate you all coming. With the transition of Clark Memorial coming to LifePoint and Norton's joint venture, I think it's gonna bring about a lot of opportunity for Norton Healthcare and LifePoint Healthcare to come into Jeffersonville and Clark County and really expand on the health services that are here. And I think, I think it's a really good opportunity for us locally in the community. And I hope that we will embrace that opportunity. And thank you all for having us.
Thank you. Being an Indiana resident, at one recent point in my life, I think the worst thing in the world was driving across the bridge. And if we can take care of everything here at Clark Memorial with our Cancer Institute centers, I think, you know, we won't have to drive over to Louisville.
I agree.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
So we have Mr. Julius, Guidelines and Principles for Consideration of Property Tax Phase and Tax Abate, Mr. Jeffersonville, Indiana.
Right, thank you very much. And I've asked Matt Hall from One Southern Indiana to join us this evening. I contacted Matt probably a month ago. And as I told you guys a few weeks back, we were looking at some other cities in how they did tax abatements and how they structured them by year, by years and percentage. And I sent this out to you guys probably two or three weeks ago for your review. And one of the things that, that, well, a few of the things that bothered me about our tax abatements that we give, it seems like we give the same tax abatement whether somebody is bringing five jobs or 500. And I think a system like this, it kind of lays the groundwork for us to be able to give greater benefits to companies that are bringing more to our area. The other thing, it could very possibly save the city some money in the long run by- by shortening the amount of years and lessening the percentage of the abatement, whether it's personal property or real property. So, what Matt and I did is we've had a couple of pretty long meetings. And we went through this draft, or this, this new sliding scale, if you will. And we added a lot of things to this that we don't currently look at. The other thing that I will say is, since One Southern Indiana always seems to vet the company before they bring them to us, they would be able to look at the company and fill this out and say, this is what you could expect from the city of Jeffersonville. The other thing is on page one, on the very bottom, it kind of gives us the ability to look at a case-by-case basis. So, if, if it was a company that we truly wanted for one reason or another, we wanted to enrichen the abatement, it gives us the ability to do that, or vice versa. So, I wanted Matt to come and kind of explain how One Southern Indiana felt about this, and maybe, because they're the ones that are going to be ultimately using it.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. We did, we looked at several policies from areas like Bloomington and Jasper, Marion County, McCordville, and Lafayette, to see how they vetted these projects and were we in line with what some of them were doing. And frankly, there were some things in there that we tweaked a little bit, because they were a little more applicable for Jeffersonville. But I think what this does is it gives the council and the city a jumping-off point about looking at what is, what is the return on investment for the city. So, we tried to add things that we thought were, would be important to the city of Jeffersonville, and, and we sort of applied this to a point system, which is something we stole, frankly, from another community. But we tweaked it a little bit, because there were things that we thought would probably have value to the city in terms of evaluating these projects. And it, it's everything from, you know, the number of net new jobs, what the wages of those jobs are, benefits. And you can go through the list of how these things are scored based on criteria for the project that we thought you would be interested in.
Do you currently use a point system? Because we don't see that process. You just bring the companies to us. We're fortunate to have you, but we don't know the process, so...
We, we don't have a formal process. We, and we applied some of our own principles to what we thought were valuable to the community. For, for example, you know, frankly, a lower-paying job is not as desirable as one that pays a higher rate, obviously. A higher taxpayer is more desirable than one who is paying less. However, there are some sort of unique things, too. If we have a building that has been vacant for two years, and all of a sudden, we have somebody who's interested in coming in and putting that building back into play, making it a job creator, we provided points values for that.
The other thing that I'll tell you is, about a year ago, I went to Matt and what he said on return on investment. I went to him and I said, "Look, if we've got a company that's wanting a $3 million expansion, and they're only bringing us three jobs, how do we draw down and drill down into that and decide what our community really gets out of it?" So, we looked at a couple of software programs, Matt Drew was crazy, about disposable dollars going back into, into the community, buying a car, buying groceries, renting a house, buying a house. I mean, we looked at everything, and we tried to look at, at some computer models that would tell us that. And we could get a close amount or a close figure, but it didn't really do, it wasn't what I was looking for in, in the tax abatement. So, I think this, we can kind of critique the tax abatement to the business, if you will. And then, we can look at what the business is actually bringing to our community.
I know, I personally liked that you all added in community involvement. Because the taxpayer, they're saying, you're giving them a tax, you know, abatement, but how does that benefit us? Well, putting importance on community involvement was...
Yeah, and on that one, we actually asked them to divine that. How do they, you know, explain their community involvement? Because what may be important to some people may not be important to others. But we wanted them to express that.
One thing I like, too, on page four, when they talk about the, on the point system, I think, especially with, with River Ridge, we're getting a lot of jobs, but a lot of them are lower-wage jobs. And I think for a family to survive, I mean, you're going to have to have two, probably the, two people working these jobs to even kind of survive. So, I like the system, the point system, as, as you, as the wages go up, it's based on the wages, the minimum wage, and it starts off at two times, up to five times, and they're up to like 14 points. And I think that, it's not so much the number of jobs, it's the salaries, you know, because they paid a lot and everything else. But I think that's, to me, that's huge.
Well, and on the next page, Mike, if you look, there's health and wellness packages, workplace wellness, retirement, and benefits packages. So, what we're trying to do is, is be able to give businesses that are going to give more than a working wage or a living wage, green technology. You know, that's something that's kind of new to our area, but with all the flooding going on, I can see a lot of advantages. The other thing that I think is going to happen in the near future, and I, I hope it doesn't, but as they're building in River Ridge, in five years or so, you're going to have some vacant buildings. And it's going to be, this gives you the ability to enriching somebody coming in and taking one of their buildings over, opposed to building a new building and leaving that white elephant sit there.
Is there anything in here that talks about continuing education? You know, River Ridge, there's several businesses up there that not only provide childcare, but they're offering two-year degrees, continuing education. And to me, that's huge in job retention. And I didn't know how that would, I didn't see a formula or...
There's not a specific table for education, but we sort of grouped that into the benefits package as a percentage of their overall package, because that's where most employers would probably put that. But we can...
There's a one company, especially one of our bigger employers up there now, I know that they're really promoting the education, advancing education, and having their employees do that, which keeps them there and benefits them and more money, so...
That's a great idea.
I have a question on page eight. That's where it gives basically what your total score added up to, and then what percentages and...
Exactly.
And things. Am I understanding that if, if somebody would only score the very minimum, one, in this case, they do get an automatic abatement for one year? I mean, so they're, any, basically, we're saying, anybody that comes and asks, we're going to give them a one-year abatement. Is that what we're saying?
Well, it's, again, I would look at it on a case-by-case basis. If it was one that, you know, that's a very low score, and if it wasn't worth the abatement, that's certainly the city's, that's why we put that first paragraph in there, to give the city the prerogative to not offer that if it wasn't, and I...
We're saying we wouldn't give more than a year abatement. I mean, we're kind of capping ourselves.
I see that as a guideline as a maximum. That would be the best-case scenario, if we decide to do something.
And we, we ran through some real-life examples that we had, and some of these scored really well, some of them not so well. It depended on, you know, maybe they, they paid higher, but they didn't have as great of packages. So, they, you know, scored somewhere in the middle. But we, it was as close to a real-life application that we could get to on the scoring system.
We all know it's competitive for existing businesses and new businesses. And this is a tool that can, in my opinion, make us more competitive, so...
I think Dennis, I have a question. Who would fill this out?
I think they would sit down with the business.
Yeah, we would.
Okay, if, if the business doesn't come to them, I mean, we're going to direct all business to them to fill this out?
I think you all are getting 99% of it.
Because if you have an existing business that says, oh, we're going to expand our business, it's going to be a million dollars and a couple of jobs, they may not have, do they all pretty much have relationships with this one?
Not all, but we get the majority of them.
I don't recall a recent member as having taken a big request.
But we would certainly be willing to, I mean, that would be a great referral from the city.
And if they can't just without this filled out, we could just say, you need to go back to One Southern Indiana and start over.
I just wanted to understand the process of who would be responsible to fill it out, who's presenting.
And it would be nice if, when this was done, this is presented to the council. It doesn't have to be in a, but we need to see what the scores are.
Sure.
And not find out the night of the meeting.
Sure.
I understand.
And so, Mr. Lewis, did you have any questions or concern when you were reading over the draft?
No, I mean, just, just under Indiana law, just to let you know, I mean, tax abatements are not mandatory. By the verbiage of this new, his discretionary about fiscal body, fiscal legislative body, so there are many communities that have very similar policies such as this. So, you do have the discretion, it's almost as not conflict with Indiana code, so...
Well, do you think this would be a useful tool for you guys?
Absolutely. It's, because we don't want to, the last thing we want to do is bring a project to you that you aren't supportive of, that you don't think is a great project. And so, this gives us sort of a guideline to decide, you know, vet those projects in a way that you guys agree to and think is a good vetting process. And we have a fairly good idea when we get here that, you know, you, you know, here's where they'll land on this project, or on this vetting form.
In your investigations, have you discovered other, any other jurisdictions that employ a point system for rating?
Yes, some of the ones we looked at in, like Jasper, Indiana, Bloomington, Indiana, places like that have them.
McCordville, which I have...
Have they had any issues with, let's just say, an entity getting a point score of, say, you know, X, Y, and Z, and then the funding body, the city council comes back and, and provides a tax abatement less than that?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I didn't look at any real-life examples, that's why I couldn't say. I'm sure that it's possible.
I like this, it's a good framework to work, to work around for taxes.
Well, what I'd like to do is if, in the next meeting, if you could have that in the frame of an ordinance. And then, in the next two weeks, if you guys have input, get it to Scott or me, and we can change the language or add something if you, like Mike was saying, if you wanted to add education. Well, I think it is covered in the benefits package, but...
You could clarify it.
Yeah, put, add it to it, add a line to it.
Well, I know a lot of them are often babysitting services, and, and that might be in there somewhat, too. And then, the education, I think, is huge. It really is, especially for a single parent.
We can add that table to it, some of them.
Okay, great. Thank you all for your input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, Ohio River Greenway Monuments and Memorial Policy.
Yes, can I pass out this? The actual policy that I'm passing out is not in your packet, so I'm not asking for this to be actually approved tonight, because there were still some last-minute changes with the Ohio River Greenway Development Commission. This is actually, some of those policies were presented previously, probably last year. This is something that the Ohio River Greenway Development Commission is requiring from the local governmental entities, such as Clarksville, Jeffersonville, New Albany, regarding the Greenway, regarding policies, regarding permanent memorials, monuments, and public art. So, once again, this is not being asked for, for any sort of approval tonight, because you're just getting this. But it's, basically, we had requested with the Ohio River Greenway Commission, if we could make changes to it, separate from what has been approved by some of the other local communities, because we have a public arts commission. And we were concerned that the existing policy that was being requested for us to be approved was basically giving the Ohio River Greenway Commission, basically blanket authority to approve all public art, monuments, and memorials within the Greenway, regardless if a local city really approved of that or not. We were concerned pursuant discussions going back to last year, just giving away blanket authority approval. So, if you go through this, there was something particularly that we put in there, paragraph three, which talks about in general how Jeffersonville will support participate in the Unified Sinage Plan and so forth, promulgated by the Greenway Commission. However, we have language in there that the, the city of Jeffersonville will not just give blanket authority to the Greenway Commission regarding these type of public art monuments and so forth that are in our portion of the Greenway. But we say that we will be committed to have discussions with them for planning purposes. And then, we also put a clause in there that the Jefferson Public Arts Commission shall be the entity to participate in the discussions with the Greenway Commission concerning the public art, monuments, and memorials. And that the Public Arts Commission would then have the final approval for any of those public art monuments and so forth that are in the city's portion of the Greenway. So, that was basically the crux of the language. And I know I've been talking with Nathan on that, and we also talked to Shane Corbin for his viewpoint on that, since a lot of the signage he's responsible for is our plan director. So, really, that's just before you tonight, to, obviously, to review for the next meeting. But obviously, this is something that the Greenway Commission has been pushing for, for us to approve their formal policy. I believe Clarksville, New Albany's previously approved their blanket policy. So, this is something special just for us pursuant to our concerns.
Nathan, the Greenway Commission is, or not the Greenway, but the Art Commission has been, about a year, two years?
Yes, almost two years, yeah.
And is, I know there's, what, five members on it? And then, how often, or how long is their term, or do they turn over?
Annually. And there's some, I haven't put it forth yet, there's some discussion on maybe expanding that group a little bit more, to more than five. And Scott and I've had a little bit of discussion on that. But at this point, there's five members. The city council appoints them and their annual memberships. We, what we'd like to do is, is we're trying to look at other cities as we continue to enhance our public art, to, to look at, maybe put some criteria on, there must be this, this type of a person, like an artist, on the commission, or must be some type of a background or understanding of who the people are. So, so it keeps a good balance on the commission, so, but that, but that's not put forth yet, but...
So, anyway, like I said, this is not for approval tonight, just for your review, and we'll keep it on the agenda. If I could ask the clerk just to put it on the agenda for the next meeting, to keep it on the agenda for discussion before we actually have approval.
She shaking her head, no. It's not what happened.
I would, I just comment, I appreciate Scott following up with, on this, because, you know, when the Greenway Commission, they came in and they basically said, here's your agreement, we need you to sign it. And we were very concerned, because we, it went against what our public, our commission was. It's like, we're the, we're the ones that establish and approve those things. And Scott worked out the language, and the Greenways Commission's agreeable to that. So, it, it was a...
Yeah, just let's... Yeah, not to cut him off, but that, it took a while. The Greenway Commission actually reviewed the language that we were inserting, they're agreeable to that. That's why it's now getting back before you, so...
Scott, on page three, across line seven, there's a line going across that.
Oh, yeah, that's purely a copy, something's wrong with the copy.
So, we're not striking that?
No, the copier in my office has one of those lines, so technicians weren't able to come out today, so that...
Kind of looks...
You've probably seen it before, when copiers have vague lines. Yeah, no, when, when it's time to approve a final version, obviously, that line, copier will be repaired. Well, the technician's coming out tomorrow.
Without the lines.
Well, actually, I mean, the, the way, the way Clarksville, New Albany have done it, there'll be like just a signature line, because they just have, like, basically, the president of the council approve. It's not really in the form of an ordinance or resolution, it's just approving policies, so...
Scott was going to go ahead and address the next one, too.
Oh, okay, then I guess, Mr. Lewis, you're going to address the, instead of Nathan, the ordinance allocating annual edit funds to the Jeffersonville Public Arts Non-Reverting Fund.
Yes, I was asked to prepare this ordinance by Nathan. And my understanding is that this ordinance has gone before the Finance Committee. And I think it was discussed there and was passed on for approval to be placed on the agenda for tonight. Basically, the ordinance is allocating annual edit funds to the Jeffersonville Public Arts Non-Reverting Fund. In essence, the ordinance is basically establishing a policy that the council shall allocate funding to the Public Arts Committee each calendar budget year in the amount of 5% of the annual collection of the city's edit funds, which shall be deposited into the Public Arts Non-Reverting Fund. And then, it says that these funds shall be used for maintaining current public art, grant matches for future projects, and for new projects or other expenses related to the advancement of public art in Jeffersonville. And the said expenditure of the funds shall be authorized and approved... be authorized and approved by the common council in its discretion as the city's fiscal body, per Indiana law, upon the advice and recommendation of the city's Public Arts Committee. So in essence, that's what this ordinance is doing.
And I'll thank you, Scott, I would just add that we, the city tends to do very, very good at creating things, or building things, but we don't do a very good job of maintaining them, and this is one thing, if we don't maintain what we're doing, then it's just going to look horrible quickly, and so, that's one of the reasons for this, and the, another thing that really spurred this is when the Secretary of Commerce, Victor Smith, came down from Indianapolis just a few weeks ago, one of his comments...
He's quoting this guy. He's such a name-dropping.
I'm just stating facts. When he came down, he talked about one of Indiana's key focus is on trying to address population stagnation, and to encourage municipalities to focus on this, and doing things that will attract talented people, and public art certainly promotes very positive community-wide, I don't know the word, it raises the community awareness, and it really promotes our, our level of image, that's a good word, and so I thought this would be a good thing, and the last thing is, the fund that we're using this from, the edit dollars, the last number of years, we have not appropriated the full amount of revenue that's generated from our edit dollars, and so, it's dollars that are, that are coming in already, but we're not earmarking them for anything yet, so that's, that's some of the thought processes behind it.
Amy, we don't have to establish another non-reverting, it can go into the ones that we already have, correct?
[inaudible].
Okay.
Nathan, I just have a couple of questions. On, edits probably going to grow in the next few years, and I guess my question is, and maybe we should reevaluate it every year instead of an ongoing thing, but I wonder if we shouldn't cap it? You know, 5% with a cap of 100,000 or 110, you know, you know what I'm saying? So that if one year you had a tremendous increase, which you could have with the growth that's going on, then if we needed that money for something else, we wouldn't have to reappropriate it, and I'm saying, we look at it every year and we evaluate it every year.
I guess my, my response would be, I certainly understand that, however, as, as our community's growing, we're hopefully going to be putting out more public art, and so the need for the dollars will, the maintenance dollars will, will increase, and because we approve, we will approve the budget for the non-reverting fund every year, we, this body still has control over those funds, and at any point this body says, you know, we think too much money is going in there to maintain our art, at that point, we just amend the ordinance, or don't appropriate the money, but, so, I mean, I hear, I get that, but I would, I would, until that's a problem, I would, I would not want to pull back and say, let's go ahead and cap it.
I give you, let me give you an example, and I understand, what I would like to see is annually, at some point, the representative from the arts come here, and we have an actual breakdown of dollars spent previous year. I give you an example, Porter came out with a new material, it's like a urethane, it's a clear, but it's, and they're wanting to put it on the, on a lot of our paintings on the flood wall, because the vandal was painting the flood wall. Well, this Porter, gallon of this is, is hundreds of dollars, I think like $300, it's $1,500 for five gallons of paint, but once you seal this painting, or whatever, then actually you can clean it off, any type of graffiti, I guess, unless they actually get into the concrete, but you can actually clean that off. So there's an example of $1,500 that, oh, not $1,500, but, yeah, $1,500, that, that may be, and if it works as well as they say, probably any art project we have in the city, you know, like we're doing a tree carving up at Port Fulton, well, there might be a possibility, we'd want to seal this to prevent damage, so, the only thing that I would ask that would actually, would, I guess, kind of go with what you're talking about, is before we, at the end of every year, or prior to the following year, they come to us and give us a list, you know, of here, what, you know, we spent $3,000 on this new product to seal our murals, and we, da-da-da-da-da, so at least you can follow it, and we don't become wasteful.
I don't think anybody here doesn't see the value of art. The only thing that I'm saying is, we're terrible at revisiting things year after year after year. We'll get five years down the road and go, how in the world did you get a million dollars in that fund, or whatever, I'm just saying, if we had a way to look at that every year and visit that, and maybe it's, maybe capping's not the way to do it, but re, maybe we only do that for one year, 5%, and then we reevaluate that every year.
Well, you go and cap it, and then reevaluate afterwards to see, okay, we've got this much art, so now we need to increase it, so that, that's...
That's my only, that's my...
Isn't it your intent, you know, like in the first, you know, item here, that this is, we're really establishing a policy to do something rather than a command to do something? You know, it says the council is hereby establishing, oh, on a second, a policy that the council shall allocate funding to the public art, I was just curious about your use of the word policy, did you go some flexibility in?
Well, because technically budgets for any sort of municipal government are yearly creatures, so to speak, so technically, a fiscal body, legislative body can't commit in future years, budgets, budgets are done one year at a time, that's why you call it policy, because even if your anticipation is that's going to be ongoing for two, three, four, five years from now, this board can't commit a budget allocation five years from now, so that's why you have to use the term policy.
But if, in the future, say in 15 years, there's a public arts commission who does not receive their 5% of their edit funds, and they come to the city and say, your council approved this ordinance, and you owe 5% of those edit funds to this commission, I mean, is that going to be, would that be able to, would somebody be able to come back on the city with that, you know, farther down the road, that became an issue? Not saying that it would, but...
Yeah, I mean, theoretically, anybody could come up with any issue against the fiscal body, but I think we, whenever you say something's a policy, because policies are not technically binding for future years, it's not binding until you actually do a budget appropriation, when you actually sit down and do the budget. I mean, this type of policy, like when people say we have a five-year spending plan, and you don't, you're five, you're not, you're not appropriating the money for whatever department you say you passed five years ago, a five-year spending plan, because that's not binding.
Right, we've had five-year capital improvement plans...
But those aren't binding.
With like fire trucks and that sort of thing, and, and we've deviated from those when we need to.
Yeah.
But those have never been in the form of an ordinance that I remember, I mean, is there a reason this is in the form of an ordinance to be passed and voted on by the council?
I was asked by Nathan to prepare an ordinance and put it in the form of a policy, so I'm doing it as instructed.
Yeah, I got you, and I'm not saying I'm against it, I think we should be committing funds to preserve what we're doing, because it's had a positive impact.
Well, for, for the sake of discussion and time, in a moment, I want to make a motion to approve on the first reading, and then we can...
Tweak it.
We can tweak it, we can, please provide me your thoughts, or Scott, your thoughts before our next meeting, and we can work this out.
Sure.
You know, that, that's why we do the three readings, so. I'll make a motion to approve 2015 OR 47 on the first reading.
Got a motion as second to pass 2015 OR 47 on the first reading, is there any further discussion?
I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to ask questions. How much money did we put into the art commission this year, about?
The redevelopment, UEZ, and the city council all put $40,000 each, $120,000 for three years, that was to pay for the, the contracted arts administrator for three years. Then, in, in the city's budget, we have a fund under CUM cap for beautification, and if you remember, I also changed that to, and public art, there's a line item for $75,000 that we split, I mean, it's not all public art, it's, so there's a portion of that that is being used, it kind of depends on what projects come up, and, trying to, I don't know if you...
We could talk, we'll talk about it offline, I thought it was an easy answer, because we have, we have, yeah, we have time to get that in.
Yes, I'm sure.
I'll, I'll take it offline and get that taken care of before our next meeting.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Mr. Lewis. And Mr. Lewis, do we have a report from you tonight?
No, nothing.
Do we have any department heads here?
No, we don't.
Do we have any public comment, Mr. Lewis?
No, we don't.
No, okay, leads us to council comments, Councilperson Smith.
I have a thought about drainage and our draining, drainage, our drainage board and our drainage ordinance, and this is just, you know, over the years, I see that we, you know, have developments, and they have to go to the drainage board, and, and I guess, Mr. Lewis, I'd like your opinion on this too, and then, and the way, the way that works is, after the develop, development is completed, the runoff, the stormwater runoff has to be the same, can't be any faster than before, you know, after development is created, but what I've come, come to kind of realize over the years is that, that is true in the design, and that's true in theory, but what ends up happening over time is, ditches aren't maintained, culverts collapse, get blocked, so, I'm not sure what other communities do, or if this just, this is not the right thing to consider, or we can't consider, but could we have an ordinance that says it has to go out slower than where it was before, like actually use a percentage, 110%?
Well, actually, as you speak...
Or 80%? Because there's maintenance costs and concerns and things that actually cause problems down the road.
Yeah, not to cut you off, but actually, as you speak, the drainage board has previously contracted with a consulting firm out in Annapolis, which is the...
Christopher.
...stormwater management, so, so, all of the drainage board ordinances, all the various ordinances are being reviewed at this time, sold to new standards, new provisions, and so forth, so that is being done as we speak, and it will be, very shortly, it will be, with all these master ordinances, with all the regulations, revisions, amendments, for drainage board, for recommendation to the city council, obviously, as legislative body, so that is being done as we speak, not to cut you off.
No, I appreciate it.
That has been, been worked out for the last several months.
It just seemed to me that, I, it, at first blush, it seems logical to make it the same, but if you look over time, it ends up slowing, the water ends up slowing down because of various reasons of maintenance and failures of the system, so, I guess we'll have that debate.
Updated and reviewed, all the regulations in the states, that's a good thing, so, I don't know exactly the time, but in the next few months, hopefully about before the end of year, we'll be getting several master ordinances regarding drainage of water.
Great, thank you.
Councilperson Rodsworth.
No comments.
Councilperson Sellers.
No comment.
Councilperson Webb.
Yes, I want to talk about, just to bring it up, on that Worley Field, you know, I know that's been a controversial item over the years, and this all seemed like we've heard over the years, whether it's the right place where they put it, or the wrong place, that's beside the point, it's there, Jeff owns it, we need to finish it up, I've had three calls today, and everybody was in support of that Worley Field complex, and I think it's good for the community, and I think it's good for the kids, and, you know, it's, we just need to do the right thing for Jeff, you know, and not make it a football, just play football there and not make it a football.
There you go. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Councilperson Julius.
I'll just reiterate what Steve said, I got quite a few emails in support of, you know, following through with what we promised, and I probably got, I'm going to say, over 20 in support, and I got one person against, that was it, probably same one tone again. But I did, I got, I got one that was against, so, that's all I've got.
Councilperson Owen.
And on the same subject, a year ago today, the News and Tribune put out the article about the opening of the football program there, and they're having, they had had their first weekend of football there, so, I don't want anybody to interpret the vote tonight to be against the project, because it's not against the project, I think we all agree that it's a good project, we want to see it finished. Wanted to point out, Commissioner Stevenson was here, but it looks like he left. Commissioner Stevenson and members of the county commissioners, the county council, they all, you know, played a major role in bringing LifePoint and Norton to our community, and I think that's going to be a very positive change for Jeffersonville and Clark County and southern Indiana, so, look forward to having them here and seeing them more. Thank you all again.
Councilperson Samuel.
I'm, I'm going to show something on the overhead. I know you're surprised.
There's nobody here surprised, Samuel.
What is it with our equipment tonight?
I think I'm going to show something on the overhead. It kind of feeds into the, the maintenance of our, of our art, which one of these?
I don't know, start pushing buttons. What did you do? Oh, you had it. Dot cam.
That's it. I'll put something down there.
What's about those other two?
Okay, this is, this is just, there's eight quick pages on here.
Eight quick pages?
How eight quick?
If I can get the clerk to finish her business, then I will...
Three minutes, too.
Finish mine.
You've got three minutes, sir. You've got three minutes. Three, yeah.
Okay, as, as you all know, we had vandalism on our, on our flood wall murals, next click. If you can see some of these, you can see the, Donnie was the, was the young man that was the vandal, and he sprayed green paint at unique spots on various, various places, and so, if you could see the top two pictures are the, are pre-being repaired, then the bottom picture, you can't see it as well, but, but we removed it, painted over it, I say we, it was removed, painted over, and blended in very well. Next picture, same thing, you can see up the top where it was vandalized, the bottom, it's no longer there, and they, and they filled in what he had painted over, in a excellent way, I might add. Next picture, see, I'm trying to be quick, here we go. You can't see it, but they spray painted green dots on each one of the guy's hands, and if you look at the bottom, they, they're repaired. They kind of wrote all over this, and spray painted all over, in multiple places along the buildings, then if you look at the bottom, you can't tell it at all, I think we have, what, one or two more?
I'm working with, sir. To add to that, Nathan, I talked to Don when this all happened, and she, he was actually huffing that, that's why he was spray painting, because he was huffing the spray paint.
Yeah, so you can see, sprayed, spray painted his name, intelligent, and then right there, it's gone, so, couple more.
Now, Don is the one that fixed it.
Don, Don Spiker, she did. Now, if you'll notice on this one, at the, the ramp to go on up, there's no people, you'll see people here in a minute, but then you see where they spray painted on the ferry, she painted in the people, and, I mean, took it back to original, I thought phenomenal, and, well, you can't, there's, there's Donnie, there's the vandal, and he, he is a disturbed, he's a disturbed fellow, he was huffing the paint, and he's the one that, Don, actually, she was, she was repairing all this, and he was spray painting just feet from her, and she started, it could have been very bad, so I just wanted to show that, show that to you, this, this is information from Don, she, this is what we were saying earlier, we, she initially, initially tried to clean off the graffiti with some, some different solvents and things, and it was pulling off the paint, and so she went and has done some checking, and as Mike, Councilperson Smith mentioned a while ago, she found through her research, a company that came out, to, we really need to clear coat the rest of the wall, and to do the remainder of the wall from, from down there near Rockies, the far, I guess, west side, all the way down, I assume it's all the way to the Sheraton almost, where, with both sides, and then on two sides of the wall where there's some painting on the other side. the other side, the paint's gonna cost $1,500. I'm supposed to get the quote, but I'm told, the total cost will be less than $5,000. And, um, at, at this point, we don't have...
Does that add life to the, I mean, I know it's got some UV...
I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure it would.
This is a brand, this is a new product Porter just came out with, that I talked to Don and the guy that's actually on spraying, and, uh, I don't have, I hope you got the question answered, but it's a new product, and I think they even went down and did some testing on some of it.
They did.
They said, they were very satisfied with it.
Yes.
So, I think, Councilperson Sellers mentioned she thought those bones had been sealed, but evidently, it wasn't, for whatever, or even that they used a seal or that it wasn't as good as this, so.
Yes. So I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, I, I guess I need to get consensus, first of all, do we want to seal the rest of the wall?
Yes.
I, I think we do.
I think we're crazy as hell.
I will bring us a quote back, I'll send it out there, everybody, so we know, but then we will need to identify where we would need to take that money from to pay, but we're gonna try to get right on it, because we don't want somebody else to vandalize it, and then have to go through all this again. I will say that Don Spiker did all the painting, it took her quite a while, and she's not charging us anything for her time. I, I think that's wrong. I wanna go on record to say that's wrong. I think she should be paid an hourly rate, because that is not in her contract, and I told her that ahead of time. But, um, but we will have a bill for the paint that was purchased through Heesya Hardware. So, that's, Mr. President, that's all I have.
Well, Nathan, I would like for us to, whether it is a letter of thanks, or a present, certificate of appreciation, or something, because Don really goes above and beyond, just like donating her time, and it was very tedious, some of the repair that she had, and, uh, we've got great people that do great things for the city, and I really like to recognize that.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, once again, I wanted to thank Troop 149 for coming and leading us into the pledge. Thank you, guys, and I'd like to give you all a round of applause. All you do for the community, appreciate you all coming, we always love it when we have guests here, especially to lead us in the pledge. And I'm finally, finally happy to report, we have the workshop, workshop scheduled for the 10th Street widening for Tuesday, September 8th, at 5:30. NDOT has confirmed, Kipta has confirmed, and we will have a representative from Duke Energy here. We figured if we got the bigger utility, the other, you know, we can address the concerns of the others, but they have the ones that have confirmed. Yes.
It's on a Monday.
Yes, we're also gonna have, we need to contact them and see what's the time allotment they need?
October 15.
15 minutes for the homeless coalition. Actually, I think Nathan and I are meeting with a few members of that group this Friday to try to work out some things before the, the workshop. So, I appreciate everybody's patience, it was very hard to, one would come, the other one couldn't come, it took a little while to coordinate this workshop, but I'm, like, pleased we finally got that scheduled. And also, wanted to publicly thank Dennis for all your work, and with, with one, oh, he already left, One Southern Indiana, I know, it was a lot of time and energy and input with this tax abatement.
I think it'll be worthwhile for the city.
I think so, too. And then also, with Norton, sir, my husband's family, stroke and cancer, it hit home, and when you said, "Provide hope," that was the number one key. We will put you on the finance schedule, and in the meantime, if I have any questions or concerns, or if the council has any question, concerns, before we address that, we will get back to you promptly. Appreciate you all coming and giving your report tonight. And also, uh, the drainage, it's Christopher Burke, that's out of Indianapolis, and I know they've been meeting here, and I think they have one more meeting, when I talked to Andy and Matt Bell, so we should be getting some sort of update on that, the ordinances on that soon. And, uh, let's see. I don't know how to say this, because I've said it before, I don't, the veto override, whenever public safety is brought up, when you try to imply that I or another member of this council doesn't care about public safety, I kinda take that personally. I try not to, but at this point, it's been several times now, we have the FOP president here, Jason, and Jackson, we have Major Lynch, that's always here, we have Assistant Chief Sean Grant here, and I don't think any of these guys know that this council does not support public safety. It's a priority of ours, and I do have to commend all the, both union presidents, and both chiefs of both, the police department and the, uh, fire department, they work really well with us. We have meetings, I know Sean always sets up, if there's something up with the fire department, he meets with several of us at a time, I think we've got a very good line of communication going. I encourage that, and I want, ask that to continue. I know we just recently got a plan of actions from Chief Hedrick that emailed out to us, I think there's gonna be some tweaking. As we all know, we got an email from Chief Kavanaugh, he's currently working on a plan, you know, for a number of police officers, and we did give the go-ahead, we applied for the cops grant, which was five officers, and we should be hearing about, something about that in the next, probably next week or so, is when I checked in with Delin. So, um, public safety is, you know, when something's brought to us, I think for the most part, I, I don't, I can't remember one time, can anybody in this council remember any time that we turned anything down with public safety? We provide them with the right equipment, we provide them with the firefighters that they're, we're asked to provide, as long as the budget supports it. So I, um, I hope that I don't have to address this again, because I will go very public if I have to address this again, but I want, for the record, that this council, unless somebody wants to speak up, we have support public safety, and we are most appreciative of all you all do for this city. You all provide a service that Jeffersonville is top-notch when it comes to, you have the service that you all provide, and we appreciate that. So on that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So I move.
Motion adjourned.